Good to go. Leslie, you okay? All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Wednesday, February 19th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Before we get started, you'll join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and so our quorum is, to my left is Sherri McCartney, and I've got Jay Scheckman to my right, Patrick McTeague, and Steve Gannon, sorry, Steve. And from the Planning and Zoning Staff, we have Ella Parker and Jim Hetzel. We have our Acting City Attorney, Dwayne Spence. And from City Staff is Lorraine Tappan, Yvonne Rudding, Talia LaForme. Did I see Carlann coming? Is she here? Okay. Carlann Devonish, and then our Ms. Leslie for taking all the minutes and notes and all the other good stuff. So, anyway, next bit of business is if you're going to participate in tonight's hearings, please stand and be sworn in if you plan on speaking.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. When you approach the podium to speak, state your name for the record and mention that you have been sworn in.
Also, if you have not filled out a signature card or comment card, please fill that out before you leave, so we have the record of it. All right, let's get into it. First case, case UDP.
I'm sorry, Chair. Can we approve the minutes?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the January move?
Second.
A motion second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, case number UDP S24053. Please note that Brad Cohen showed up at 6:02. Case number UDP S24053, start to the left, Sherri. Do you have any disclosures?
None.
Brad?
None.
Jay?
None.
Patrick?
None.
Steve?
And I, as well, did a site visit. Okay. Is Michael Govern here? There we go. Good evening, sir. Please state your name.
Michael Govern, I have been sworn in. Good evening. Michael Govern, G-O-V-E-R-N.
I need to turn your mic on.
Sure.
What's your address?
What's the problem?
2507 Northeast 32nd Avenue, Fort Lauderdale.
Okay, you're right. Hello, it's...
All right, my name, like I said, is Michael Govern. I'm here on behalf of Titan Development, my company. I'm the owner and developer. I'm representing 2600 Northeast 32nd Avenue. The entity is 2600 Dolphin LLC. We're here to propose two zero lot line homes. It's Site Plan Level Three. I think it's important to point out that a previous project of similar type was approved directly across the street. Our subject property is identified with a red circle. Across the street, there was four zero lot line homes approved in 2014. They've been built. You can see pictures of them and have been successful. They've won a community appearance award. That is our proposed product. I think it's important to note that this product shows much better than a duplex, which is allowed by right, but without much of the design requirements put on the zero lot line product. We had a pre-application meeting with the City of Fort Lauderdale, July 29th, 2024. Mailing went out to all the owners within 300 feet. We spoke with Dolphin Isles Association President, Dr. Alan Ziman. We held a neighborhood meeting onsite November 22nd of 24. The planning and zoning meeting, we're here now, and then City Commission meeting will follow. This is the proposed site plan. We're located within the RD15 zoning district. The total property square footage is 9218. We're proposing two fee simple lots of 4675 square feet and 4543 square feet respectively, exceeding the 4,000 square foot required for a zero lot line parcel. Proposed lot width of 55 feet for each exceeds the minimum requirement of 40 feet for a zero lot line product, and two units is below the allowable density of 3.17 units. Any questions?
Are there any questions for the applicant before we open this up to the public? Apparently not. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public participation and bring it back to the board for further comment, or?
I do have one question. The ones that you showed us from 2014, were those over 4,000 square feet, or were those 4,000 square feet, the zero lot lines that were across the street?
The lot size is very similar. They're about 4,500 square feet.
And the building, though, you're asking for more than 4,000?
No, our building square footage, the AC square footage, is just under 3,000 feet on these. I didn't mention that in the presentation, but it's very similar product of lots across the street.
So, what's across the street is the same lot size, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Anyone like to make a motion?
Does this mean we get to go home?
I didn't bring my script today, or I'd do it if I left.
Here, pass this down. Keep it.
Site Plan Level Three, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, great. I move to adopt the resolution approving a site plan Level Three, case number UDP S24053, based on the following findings of fact, the facts of the city staff report, testimony heard by the applicant, and the board finds that the application meets the standards and requirements of the ULDR and criteria for the proposed use as cited in the resolution. Do we need to make the staff? Any staff comments?
Yes.
Any other?
Yes.
How do I say that again? Staff condition, and with any staff conditions?
Including the staff conditions.
And include any staff conditions?
So, we have a motion. Is there a second? Come on, guys, work with me.
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Oh, no, I guess you got it. I'm sorry. Trying to expedite things.
Good try. Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
No.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You're welcome. Next case, are there any staff conditions on the balance of these? Should I roll it all up for, that on every item, it includes staff conditions? I don't know what's got staff conditions in done. So, if somebody wants to make a motion that on every item, it includes?
So, I think there's some confusion between the adopting of the staff report as part of the record and the staff conditions. You should consider the staff conditions on a case-by-case basis when you hear the items, but traditionally, you have been able to adopt the staff reports as, in one motion, as part of the record of the meeting.
So, not the conditions, we want to do a staff report part of the meeting. Somebody want to make a motion to that? All right, we'll just deal with them one at a time. Next case, UDP S24042. Okay, thank you. John Baranco, any disclosures?
No.
Sherri? Brad?
No.
Jay?
No.
Patrick?
None.
Steve?
No.
And I have none. All right, sir. Good evening. You gotta turn the microphone on.
Good evening. My name is Gear Mo Rivero. I was sworn in before the board at the start of the meeting. I'm here to talk about the project at 845 Northwest Third Avenue, representing the City of Fort Lauderdale. This project is, this project is a proposed stormwater pump station at 845 Northwest Third Avenue. This is in the residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density zoning district, RMM25, which we are requesting relief to put a public purpose use stormwater pump station. In addition, we are also requesting deviation from the required minimum lot width, reduce corner yard setback along North Fifth A Street, eliminating the irrigation requirements, and to reduce the landscape buffer yard along the south property line. The Progresso Village Neighborhood is one of the seven priority neighborhoods identified in the city's stormwater master plan. The stormwater pump station is going to provide relief to the Progresso Village Neighborhood, reducing flood stage inundation events, and providing a relief to be able to discharge the stormwater that is collected by the pump station to the North Fork New River. So, these are just part of the critical projects that the city is implementing to improve resiliency in storm events in the City of Fort Lauderdale. This project includes an electrical building that's going to house the control panel for the pumps, and inside a building that's going to resemble, you know, the neighborhood characteristics, the architectural features resemble Spanish architectural style colonial homes. We also have an emergency generator in addition to provide power in case of any power outages during a storm event. Also, we're going to be including, you know, Florida native landscaping around the property to be able to kind of beautify the area and also blend in with the neighborhood, red-tipped cocoa plum shrubs all along the property fence to provide some kind of visual aesthetic. Thank you.
I do, I do have one disclosure, though. Not that it makes a difference, but I just want to disclose that I own property that is, that would be affected by this, but I don't believe that that is, would affect me voting on this, would it? Because it's a drain, it's a pump.
It has to be a special gain that's unique, that has a unique gain to you that others don't also attain from it, so.
My interpretation is that I could still vote on it.
That's correct.
Knowing the, okay, thank you. I just wanted to disclose it, though. Thanks.
Okay, before we open up to the public, is there anybody who has questions of the applicant? Anybody want to be heard on this from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public participation, bring it back to the board for more discussion or a motion.
He's got the, he's going to be the motion rail.
Motion Mary.
Here we go. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP S24042, based on the facts of finding, the facts of the city staff report, testimony heard by the applicant, and the board hereby finds the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report.
Any further discussion? Leslie, if you could call the vote, please.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And John says yes, too.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Baranco, yes. I did write down you arrived.
Okay.
So sorry, I hadn't, I didn't.
Did you get your vote in, John?
He did.
Okay. All right, next case, UDP V24001. Disclosures, John?
Spoke to applicant's attorney.
Sherri?
None.
None. Brad Cohen, none.
Jay?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Patrick?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Steve?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
And I also spoke with the applicant's attorney. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lockery. On behalf of the YMCA and Broward Health, the city's less see on property adjacent to Northeast Sixth Terrace. Go back. Oh, that's the right slide. As your staff report indicates, this is a request by the City of Fort Lauderdale to vacate a portion of Northeast Sixth Terrace that runs between Northeast Eighth Street or Nenninger Drive and northeast, on the south side, and Northeast Ninth Street on the north side. You can see it here at the next, let me go to the next slide, a little closer up. This is a general area just east of Federal Highway. Here, you see the right-of-way, it was actually dedicated by the Progresso Platt back in 1911. It runs to the east of Federal Highway. You see Federal Highway on the left side of the screen. The area that we're vacating is the green area, and then Parker Playhouse, I'm sorry, Federal Highway is on the west, it's east of that. And then further to the east is Parker Playhouse, which is on the right side of the screen. The properties that were previously utilized this right-of-way, most of them were purchased by the City of Fort Lauderdale in the 1990s. They were torn down. You now see it's vacant property, and this will be the future home of the YMCA and Broward Health, which you'll be seeing in a couple months. We agree with all conditions of your staff report. We agree with the staff report that this application has met all requirements for a vacation, and we are happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before we open up to the public? Hearing none, is there anyone here from the public that would wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public participation, bring it back to the board for additional comment or a motion.
I guess I said it again. Okay. Yeah, you said it. I'm good doing that. Yep. Sorry, vacation. Let me just take a quick look at it. Oh, there it is. Sorry, same things. Okay. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP V24001, based on the following facts of finding, the facts in the city's staff report, and/or based on the testimony heard by the applicant, and the board hereby finds that the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion before we vote? Leslie?
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question. Does anyone else want the book?
Nope. You're doing a great job. So, before we call the next case, I've got some people that are speaking here. Just so that you know, if you are a HOA president, you get five minutes. If you're on your own, speaking on your own behalf, you get three minutes. So, case number UDP S24030. Any disclosures? We'll start with you again, John.
The landscape architect is my sister.
Sherri?
Oh, none.
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 Jay?
None.
Patrick?
I spoke with the attorney for the applicant.
Steve?
Andrew never calls me anymore.
I spoke to the applicant's attorney, and I also did a site visit.
I didn't call a lot of others on it, to be fair.
Your way, Andrew.
Good evening, Chair members of the board. Andrew Shine with Lockery and Chakas here, representing the property owner. The property is located at 3,000 East Oakland Park Boulevard, just south of Oakland Park, next to the Intercoastal. This is right across from Shooter's. This is a close-up aerial of the property. It's now demolished. It was previously about a 42,000 square foot office building. Before getting into the project itself, this is, I think, a first for the Planning and Zoning Board in that this is a project that is utilizing the city's Transfer of Development Rights program. I'll do a little brief background, and can answer questions. Staff might be able to answer questions as well. But the Transfer of Development Rights program was approved by this Planning and Zoning Board in December of 2020, and approved by the commission in March the year after that. The, as it relates to this property at least, the Transfer of Development Rights program allows folks who own historic properties that have been designated historic by the city to create development rights that they can then transfer to other properties throughout the city. Doesn't need to be their own. This, for this application, the rights that we're talking about are 10 extra units of density per acre and 12 feet in height. And this is the property that they came from. It's the 901 Progresso property, just to the northwest of the tracks in the Flagler Village area. And what they did is they put together a massing study to show what could be built on the site within the parameters of the zoning code and density. And when they did that study, they found that they can do 56 units on the site. That's what they can fit with, potentially, on the site, and about 93,000 square foot of other developable space. And this building is, it's a one- or two-story building. It's where there's a pizza place there, Laser Wolf, the brewery is located there, and it's designated historic. So, they received approval under this program. They now have 56 units in their bank and 93,000 square foot of development space to give to other properties that may not be eligible for it under the current zoning code. And they're issued what's called a certificate of eligibility, and these are the two certificates for the project. On the left is for the 56 units, and on the right is the square feet. And the way this works is that you can transfer up to 10 units per acre to a different project. So, the current density cap for this project site would be 50 units per acre normally under the flex, under flexibility provisions. There are other provisions like live local or the, what we call the Geller Amendment, to go higher than, you know, significantly higher than that, unlimited essentially. But under the standard zoning code, it's 50 units per acre. Under this project, it allows up to 60 units per acre if you get those development rights from the other property owner. And it also allows for an extra 12 feet in height. And the way that works is it's based on square footage. So, if you have, let's say, your 15th floor is 10,000 square feet, but you're above 150 feet, you need to buy that 10,000 square feet from whoever has those development rights. So, this project is the first to, to my knowledge at least, to utilize this TDR program in front of the Planning and Zoning Board. And not all properties are eligible to receive the extra rights. So, giving its historic properties and some others, receiving, not all properties in the city are eligible. When it comes to receiving the extra density, it's only properties that are within the city's unified flexibility zone, which is mostly on commercial corridors, including Oakland Park Boulevard. And in order to receive the extra square footage or the extra height, it has to be within a certain zoning districts, mostly commercial, CB, which is this project is one of them. So, this project is eligible to receive them, and the seller of the TDR has already had that part approved. We did do public outreach for this project in April of last year. This project's been going on for a while. We've been working a lot with our neighbors to the south, specifically a lot on their concerns. In April, we noticed the DRC meeting to the Coral Ridge Civic Associations and the Coral Ridge Country Club Estates Association. We were able to meet with the board of the Coral Ridge Civic Association where this is located. We met with them in May. They, throughout all of this, I do want to say, throughout all of this public outreach, we did not hear anything negative about the project. Our neighbor to the south had specific construction-related issues, which we're working on an agreement with them on, but overall, but not the project overall. So, in May of last year, we met with the Coral Ridge Civic Association. They wanted us to meet with the Lauderdale Towers, who's our neighbor to the south. We met with them first in June of last year. I've been in contact with their attorney on a near-weekly basis. So, we met with their board in June. In October, we had our official public participation meeting, when we notify everyone within 300 feet of the property. We had about 20 people at that meeting, again, most, all positive, at least related to the development itself. And then in November, we had another meeting with the Lauderdale Tower General Membership, which is where we started this construction agreement with the neighbor, which will be finalized before construction starts. A little history of the property. This is not, this property's been in front of the Planning and Zoning Board before. In April of 2021, there was another project approved here, same developer, same owner. It's still an active site plan. If this one is approved, though, it will fully replace the old plan, but currently, it's still an active site plan. And the project is on the top left of, this is the old approval. The old approval was 103 units, 4,000 square feet of restaurant, and three 15-story towers. Since this project was approved, the rental market, at least on the lending side, has become a little bit more difficult for financing rentals. Right now, it's actually picked back up again. But when we first submitted this, the new project, it was a little harder to get financing. There were a lot less cranes in the sky, and things weren't going up. So, the developer decided to come back with a condo concept instead of rentals. And it coincided, this submission coincided with the first certificate of eligibility for the TDRs. So, they figured that they would, you know, use this new program that the city created. In order, these were all, it's three towers, 150 feet in height, 103 units. What we're proposing is 129 units, same amount of restaurant and a marginal amount of retail, and we're proposing it at 162 feet. So, we went from 103 units in three towers at 150 feet to 129 units in one tower at 162 feet. And we figured scaling it back would be the right thing to do, since we are going slightly higher and slightly more dense. So, this is the new project. So this is the, the new project, it's one single tower, instead of the tower that you saw before, it's just, it's a parking garage. So the massing is significantly lower, it's about twenty-one percent lower than the old approval. This is the view of the old one, looking east, southeast. And this is the, the new project, so again, a little higher, but a lot less massing, particularly on Oakland Park Boulevard, all the massing was put towards the intercoastal, similar to our neighbor to the south. This is a view on, so the, the project is located not really along Oakland Park, it's along the access road of Oakland Park, which goes under, under the bridge and back west on Oakland Park Boulevard. And this is a view from that access road, and this will be the main entrance to the project. There is a secondary exit and, exit and entrance on northeast thirtieth place, but the main entrance of the project is going to be on, on Oakland Park Boulevard. Or right, right off of Oakland Park Boulevard. This is a view from the waterway. At night, there are going to be thirteen boat slips, we don't have the exact breakdown of public and private, there are going to be at least two public ones for use at the restaurant on the north side, and the rest will be private boat slips. This is a view from the pool deck, this is an at-grade pool deck, under the neighborhood compatibility provisions of the code, it, when you go, when you're at forty feet in height, every foot above that, you have to step back one foot, so that's why you see a lot of these wedding cake tiered style buildings. In lieu of doing that, we decided to push the entire building to the north, just have one giant setback at the ground floor, and our neighbors to the south definitely appreciated that. This is a view from northeast thirtieth place, this is going to be the, the secondary entrance and exit. There are drainage issues on this street that we're working with our neighbors on, we are adding an additional catch basin, and we're also adding curbs and gutters here, which will help significantly to get that water actually into the storm drains. And all of our storm water will be retained fully on-site, there are roof drains that go into exfiltration trenches and drainage wells underground, so all of our storm water will be retained on-site, and hopefully the improvements we're making to the street with the drainage there will help existing flooding issues, at least on this part of the street. This is a little comparison just from the old project, again, the massing is about twenty-one percent lower, overall building square footage than the previous approval. We do have a hundred and twenty-nine units, we did increase the parking spaces commensurate with the, the increase in residential units, plus a little bit extra, so we'll have three hundred and ten parking spaces in the project. The old tower floor plate, it was, it was split between three towers, and in total, it was about twenty thousand square feet of, of massing in the sky. We've trimmed that down significantly to between fourteen and fifteen thousand five hundred square feet or so. So again, the overall massing of the tower is significantly lower than it previously was, and we also have a lot more landscaping than before. This is the overall site plan for the project, showing the entrances and exits, northeast thirtieth place to the south and the Oakland Park Service Road to the north. The pool deck is at grade, this is a use on a waterway, we do meet all of the waterway use requirements, including the twenty-foot landscape yard adjacent to the, the bulkhead on the waterway, heavily landscaped there. We also do have a fourteen hundred square foot pedestrian plaza. This is going to be a, kind of a unique area for a pedestrian plaza, it's just under the Oakland Park Bridge, or right next to the Oakland Park Bridge, but there's going to be a fabulous restaurant there, so it'll, it'll be a, a unique area within the city. This is the elevation from the waterway, you can see on the, the left side, we have a large setback from our neighbor, and then further to the south of that is an alley, so we're, we're very far from our neighbor to the south. This is a view from the Oakland Park Service Road. This is a view from northeast thirtieth place and south facade. And, and this is the view on the, the west facade. This is our landscape plan, we landscaped as much as we possibly could, street trees wherever we could put them, F D O T was a little bit restrictive on what we could provide on the north side with the bridge, but we were able to provide a significant number of shade trees, still meeting the requirement, would have liked to provide more, but F D O T was a little bit restrictive there. And that's the project, definitely here if you have any questions, thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Before I open this up to the public, I know some people came in late and weren't sworn in, so before I open up, if you are planning to speak, please stand, be sworn in.
Good evening, if you would raise your right hand and, and look out to me. I swear or affirm that the testimony I give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you, when you approach the dais, state your name for the record and whether or not you've been sworn.
All right, we're gonna now open up to the public, I've got three speaking cards and got four people sworn in, so somebody's gonna have to fill one of these out, but Ms. Karen Polivka? We're gonna start with you, ladies first, is that all right?
Thank you, yeah, it's perfect, thank you so much. I am vice president of Coral Ridge Country Club Estates.
Give us your name.
I'm sorry, Karen Polivka. Vice President of Coral Ridge Country Club Estates, but Tim is the president, so I'll give him the five minutes, just seeking, I'm speaking against the variance, the additional units, we already have such traffic issues, I sat at the stoplight at northeast twentieth Ave today, which is one street light west of Federal Highway, when the bridge was up at Oakland Park, sat there for two rounds, because I normally turn left at the Ponyotropecal there, and I couldn't figure out what was going on, and it was just because the bridge was up, so traffic was backed up all the way to the west part of Federal Highway. So we have multiple projects going on, and we have been presented with other projects in the area, so you've got the new apartments there at Federal and Oakland, called Oakland, then just north of that is a new project at thirtieth Court and Federal, I'm not sure what that's called. And then you have where C V S is on the north side of this project, they had approached this for a hundred and fifty-foot multi-family space as well. So, just looking for smart growth, we've got boacampers property that they talk about rebuilding, and then of course, right across the intercoastal from this project as well. So, considering the traffic, that we're already very congested, just speaking against the additional units they're asking for.
Thank you. All right, Tim Hernandez.
Tim Hernandez, I'm president of the Coral Ridge Country Club Estates Homewards Association, I'm also here speaking, and I have a email here from Chris Williams, who's the president of the Coral Ridge Homewards Association as well, so if I go over the five minutes, hopefully this will allow me to do that.
I don't know, can we do that, Dwayne, can he be speaking for the, the neighborhood president of a different area?
No, we typically don't yield time to other speakers.
If he gave you something written, you can submit that, but...
He gave me a, I have a, an email from him.
An email? He's, he's the legal guy. All right, from the top.
All right, thanks, um, a couple things, I wanna, I'm the president of the Coral Ridge Country Club Estates Homewards Association, I'm a planner, been a planner for many years, I'm a developer as well. We're, we're against, our neighborhood and the Coral Ridge Association are both against this proposal to add additional units, additional height, and additional commercial space into this project. We think, we're not here to take anyone's vested property rights away, they have, they have an approval from five years ago, and we're happy to live with that approval, which we think has some merits, multiple buildings, provide more permeability, more light throughout the development, less shadow, those are, those are positive attributes of the, of the existing proposal. However, I want to clear up a couple things, okay? The, the public outreach process was misrepresented by the, the petitioner's attorney. We, there was never, and I have another email here, from the president of the Coral Ridge Association, where they asked for answers to questions, they never received the answers to questions. We asked for a traffic study back in, back in 2024, that was never provided to us. Now, it's interesting, what Karen said is, is relevant, because the code states that if you don't show more than a thousand trips for your individual project, regardless if it's on ten thousand square feet, or whether it's on ten acres, then you don't have to do a full-blown traffic study. Now, you have provisions, you know, forty-seven twenty-five-two, your adequacy requirements, okay, and your neighborhood compatibility requirements really require a developer, and if they truly care about the neighbors, they'll do the traffic study, especially when they were asked to do it, instead of just ignoring it and trying to, you know, do the minimum that they arguably are only required to do. We all live here in Coral Ridge Country Club Estates and the Coral Ridge neighborhood. Have you ever, I asked Mr. Shine on the phone yesterday, before I hung up on, on him after he called me a liar, I, I asked him, how many times have you gone through the intersection of Oakland Park, Middle River, and Federal Highway? I do it all the time. Well, we live there, I've been doing it for thirty years, thirty-two years I've lived in the neighborhood, it's brutal, and we see what's coming. There's not really any kind of legitimate public transportation in the area, if you're gonna add condominium units, expensive condominium units, these people aren't gonna be taking Broward County transit, they're gonna be getting on US, they're gonna be getting on Oakland Park, and they're gonna be clogging up the road further. We can't even get, the intersection of Bayview and Oakland Park is also a mess, there's many times when the, when, because, when the bridge goes up, that the traffic backs up, you know, way west of Bayview Drive, we can't get in and out. So, you know what, we can't stop the project per se that's approved, but we can come here and ask, hey, you know, let's be realistic, let's not add to the problem that's obviously in existence in this location, we're not anti-development, we are, you know, for somebody who's willing to work with the neighborhoods, the two neighborhoods, which together, I think we have fifty-two hundred residents, and I think Coral Ridge has fifty-six hundred residents, there's ten thousand people that live in these two neighborhoods, and I guarantee you, Mr. Shine also on the phone says, everybody loves this project, everybody I've talked to loves this project. Well, we found out about this two days ago, and we're here to tell you, everybody does not love this project. And I think there needs to be a lot more work on this project, a lot more homework done, and we need to look at how you can ameliorate the impacts on our two large neighborhoods that pay a lot of tax money to the city, and we, we care about the impacts on the community, I mean, we're not getting paid to be here, we're here because, you know, we care, so, that's kind of my, my statement.
All under five minutes, congratulations, thank you. All right. Next is Bruce Quahley, hope I pronounced that correctly, if I didn't, my apologies. Are you representing yourself, sir, are you representing?
Well, yeah, Bruce Quahley, I'm also Coral Ridge Country Club Estates board member, and I've lived there for, I think, thirty-five-plus years, and...
Unfortunately, a lowly board member doesn't get five minutes, you only get three, you gotta be the president of the HOA.
That's fine, that's fine, that's all I need. But, yeah, I think the other thing to consider, and they, both Karen and Tim have mentioned, is that we, it's not just this project alone, it's all the others around that we know are swarming, ready to do their X number of units on the site and, and pushing for flex units. We looked at the Kwekset Business Center, that's next to the adult living facility, you know, and, and we met, Karen and I met with them, and they were supposed to get back with this, and they never did. So, there's that group, and then there's, we know boacampers, I don't know what finally happened with boacampers site, and then, you know, with shooters, we have the, I'm, I'm not sure what they're doing, have they come before you yet, on, you know, I know they're demolishing the boat, boat things, but, so there's, all of those are like a, a lob wedge from the subject property, so that's a boatload of units in those places as well. So, with all of that, and as Karen mentioned and Tim, the traffic is just abysmal in our area, just, it's, it's clogged up, and it's, you know, I'm, I'm okay with them getting what they deserve, but not additionally, and then not to mention, it sounds like there's gonna be a restaurant there as well, that, how, how big is the restaurant gonna be? Anybody know? Four thousand? Okay, what was the other ten thousand square foot thing that was mentioned?
One thousand square feet of three thousand.
Oh, okay.
For a total of four thousand nine hundred thirty-five.
For the, okay, gotcha, okay. So, yeah, the traffic, it's, it's horrible, we don't need any more of it, and we're, we're okay with them doing whatever they were approved for before, I guess, and, you know, but I don't want, I don't want to see them get anything beyond that point, so, that's, that's all I've got, thanks.
Mr. Chair, could I use the last few seconds of my time or whatever I have, I wanted to make one more?
Sure, I'm in a good mood, that's kind of it. How many seconds you say?
How many ever you have, I used to have less than third, I use less than five, so how much ever is left, so...
It was like eight seconds, I'm kidding.
Oh my God, okay, well, but I...
I'll, I'll give you a minute, but do me a favor, introduce yourself again for the record, just so that...
Yeah, Tim Hernandez, Coral Ridge Country Club Estates, twenty-eight twenty, northeast fortieth street. What I would like, though, is for the staff or somebody, Tyler or whoever, could you put up the staff report, page forty-two of the PDF on the screen? It's two aerial photos. What I'm gonna, what I want to show you, these are two aerials that were shot from the east, looking out over mostly Coral Ridge, but somewhat Coral Ridge Country Club. And so when you think about neighborhood compatibility, you think about things like massing, of course, you think about how the building relates to the rest of the neighborhood. But these, which were taken from the applicant's submittal, I think are very informative. Page forty-two of the PDF, of the staff, of the staff report. All right, thanks, Tyler. No, it's the one, there's two pictures on that page. And they show the, the view from the east looking out to the, kind of the southwest and west, I just want you to look at that, and ask yourself, is this truly compatible with the neighborhood? Now, you can say, well, twelve more feet is not gonna make any difference, but it does.
It's the, yeah, on the backup, it's the backup PDF, if you can open it.
Maybe it wasn't opening site.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Is this an item that we're gonna be getting, or, or no?
That was forty-two.
I think, I think we understand the point that you're trying to get across, Mr. Hernandez, okay, thank you.
Oh, you can see it there.
I have a question.
Forty-two, right? We all have.
Let me, can I look?
Sure, you can take a look. Is that it?
No.
Nope, that's not it.
It's the one that, that's shooting, it's shooting from the east to the west.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, it's a Baranco, that's the picture. Baranco to the rescue, nope.
That's a pretty good one.
That's a pretty good one.
I'll take it.
Okay. You like that picture? That's what I do.
I don't like it, but it's...
Can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question?
Mr. Hernandez, you have, somebody wants to ask you a question. Mr. Hernandez, you have, somebody wants to ask you a question.
Not that, well, it's got to come from the east to the west. You're getting close.
I have a question for you, Tim.
Yeah, sure.
In terms of, like, did you guys discuss at all that, like, the existing approval is another stucco box of rentals that's basically all over the city, and this is like a high-end luxury glass, like, high-end finish? In terms of, like, compatibility of the neighborhood, do you think, like, the existing, just another stucco box, like, lining Federal and Flagler Village is more compatible with your neighborhood?
Well, the only thing I would say is, we have a lot of stucco boxes in our neighborhood, for better or for worse. However, I think that this is an example of where the developer should sit down with the two neighborhood associations that are representing 10,000 residents, okay? And try to work through a solution that, you know, doesn't add more traffic than what's already approved. We don't want more traffic, okay? And the aesthetics of the project, of course, we care about the aesthetics of the property, but I'm not going to trade off, I'm not going to stand here and trade off, you know, the aesthetics of the property for more traffic on Oakland Park Boulevard. Our neighbors are up in arms about this. We get, I mean, you want to know what I hear about? Hear about vacation rentals, okay? I hear about cut-through traffic, and I hear about we can't get out of our neighborhood anymore, okay? I hear it every day, I mean, in this highly-paid position that I have, as HOA volunteer. So, I mean, I'm here representing the, what everyone talks to us about every day, and these, Bruce and Karen, we've lived in this neighborhood for 30 years, each of us, okay? I know Karen, how long? 25, 25, 30, and 35 and 32. So, we've seen it, we've seen the whole thing. I mean, you don't see, hear us coming and complaining all the time about every single thing that happens in the city. We came here tonight because we thought this was important, and it's what our residents are asking us to do.
Noted, thank you. Were you wanting to speak on this, sir?
No, number six.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public that wants to be heard on this item before we bring it back to the board? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for additional comment or a motion?
I just, and I have a question for the applicant real quick. How many additional units from the old one to the new one are there?
It's 26 units, and, 26 additional units, and it's also, the, our traffic statement, it only considers all of this multifamily, high-rise residential. What it doesn't take into account is ownership differences between rental and condo, and these are going to be luxury condos. Frankly, these folks aren't going to be here for half the year. So, the numbers do show a few more additional trips for the additional 26 units, but the subjective part that's not in the numbers is that this is condo versus rental, which is a huge difference, not just in the people who live there year-round and the number of trips they take, but in the, the quality for the neighborhood. You don't have moving trucks in all the time, you don't have, you have permanent people who own the property, which, we've all lived next to rentals versus condos, and that's not taken into account here.
And the other question I have is, the 26 units, are they two bedrooms, three bedrooms, one bedrooms?
A mix, the project is mostly two and three bedrooms.
So, do you know how many additional bedrooms there are in those 26 units?
I don't have that number.
Okay, all right.
Very good question.
Can't be worse than 78.
You're right.
Do we, do you have the rights to cross the boundary and ask them?
No. No. You done with your question?
I am.
Anybody else have any questions? Patrick?
Yeah, just for the additional units and the additional height, other than profit, what's the driving force for those extra units and extra height in the building?
Honestly, the transfer of development rights program was available, and, you know, this was a, an eligible site for it.
So, it was for the rights that they bought, that's how many they bought, and therefore they just kind of put them on there?
It was, no, it was planned to, we backed into the number of ones that we were going to buy. They had 56 available, so we could have had, you know, between 1 and 56 of them. The design of the building drove the additional units. And also, we wanted to trim down the, the bulking of the project. I did hear someone say that, that this, that the previous approval will have more light and less shadow, and I don't know if we're looking at the same plan, because the other one is a massive project. But we backed into that number, and then we trimmed down the project massing-wise because we were doing additional units. We didn't want to take what we had before, add another floor, and add more units. If we were taking, we wanted to give as well, and that's why we did nicer finishes, trimmed down the building a lot, and just made an overall better project.
Which, yeah, is also the difference between a rental and a high-end condo, some of those things.
Right.
How many units per floor, would you say? Not on the top ones where it's a little narrower, but...
Seven, seven at the bottom. About between 7 and 9, about, depending on the floor, 7 and 10.
Thank you for that.
Steve?
Yes, so you, so there, you have more density, you have more units, you've taken some of the massing down, so the square footage of the units is a little smaller than it was? Is that poss, is that accurate or not? I mean, you added like two floors to it, right?
Yeah, two floors. The unit sizes are about the same.
Okay. Didn't have to do much changing, losing that entire building, that's what I was asking you about, that entire tower, and adding the, okay.
It became a little bit more efficient, too, in the new design.
Okay.
Shari?
Andrew, I understand that the transfer of the rights is what, the driving force behind this, and it's adding 26 more units, 12 feet in height, and so there's issues of compatibility. And I'm wondering why or whether the developer would consider having the same height, the same number of units, but the redesign that you proposed?
The redesign is extremely expensive, I will say that. It's, I can't say, no, we won't do it, I don't have that answer today. It, it would take off two floors of the building, we would have to lower floor-to-ceiling heights as well, likely, for the, for the units, when you go from, you know, rental to condo, you want higher floor-to-ceiling heights, nicer units, better-looking exterior. Could it be done? Probably, I think it would be a worse building, just for the extra 12 feet, we're talking 12 feet and 26 units at the end of the day.
But you're talking the impact of traffic, which is troubling and raises compatibility issues, whereas the design might be more favorable.
I hear the traffic issues, we, we did not even trip a threshold for a traffic study. We, usually, we see, you know, downtown, 300, 400, 500-unit developments, this is, we're in the, the single 100s here, so, and it's a condo, not a rental. So, I understand...
He's not saying the true thing here.
We rent right away, okay, I'm helping promote this property as well. It's rent right away, 90 feet, minimum taxes.
Folks, you're not on...
They rent three times a year, and they're owned by...
Folks.
These are, these are condos, they are not...
They're not being rented.
Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Chair, my question was about whether they're condos or not, Andrew.
If they're fee simple units, they're condos, let's move on.
Yeah, and, and condos or not, and I see the argument either way on that, the concern is, is traffic-driven for compatibility, and the design is better, so that would help you with compatibility, if you could maintain the same number of units, therefore the same traffic impact. With this redesign, I think that is ultimately more compatible than the approved project.
We, we can't maintain the same number of units with the new design. It's not financially feasible to do so. It's, the reason we're doing the nicer finishes is the more units and the nicer design, so it's, it's a trade-off there.
Anybody else have any questions?
And we, again, and I also want to say, if the neighborhood wants to meet with us, we'd happily defer it tonight if that's the case, but I don't know that we're getting over traffic issues for 26 additional units, because it, that it's not...
Well, there's height as well.
What's the number of trips associated with the 26 additional units?
It's about...
Tyler may know this.
It's about 118. I calculated about four, in our traffic study, it's about four and a half trips per unit. It's a rough number, because there are formulas involved, but it's about 118 extra daily trips.
Okay.
Not PM peak hour, yeah.
So, that's obviously a minimal amount, but by comparison to the office building that was there before, which is a beast?
Yeah.
I don't know if either of you can, I don't, I'm not looking for a specific number, but was that office building generating more trips than this new building? I live in the area, I travel Oakland Park all the time, so I know exactly what you guys are talking about, and I don't recall traffic lightening up when that beast of a building left, of the office building. So, I need to understand for myself what the impact of that previous building by comparison to this.
Total number of trips, it did increase, it did increase from the office building, but the peak hour trips did not. So, in the, the out, the PM peak hour, you know, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, when folks are leaving, there are going to be about 33 less trips compared to the office building.
But what about overall?
Overall, it did increase, yes.
How much?
471 daily trips, just at different times of the day, you know, when, middle of the day, rather than peak hour, rush hour.
And 12 feet taller.
And 12 feet taller, yeah, but the rush hour trips are actually a lot lower. In, in the morning, it's going to be 53 fewer trips than the office building, and going out in the, in the evening and rush hour, it's going to be 33 fewer trips.
So, I don't know how deep your study went, but if people are obviously leaving, what is that, 30th Street, they go out, turn onto Bayview, do you know how many people are turning right, they're waiting for the bridge, and how many people are turning left and getting out of there?
We did not study that intersection like that, no. We do expect most of our traffic to go out on the Oakland Park Slip Road, though, not 30th Place.
Any other questions?
Mike, Mike, I've got questions. Not really questions, more of a statement.
Go ahead.
I mean, I think we, as a city, got a huge challenge on our hands, because, you know, the writing is on the wall, the zoning is what it is, the land use is what it is, the code is what it is. A lot of these properties have the potential to be exactly what you see here presented before us today, which is a very nice building, it checks all the boxes, meets all the parking requirements, they're not asking for much, they're asking for something that we wrote into the code. And it still pains me to, you know, call this compatible with the neighborhood, it's compatible with the underlying land use and zoning and all those things, and it really pains me, because I drive that street every morning. And that part of me, it just scares the heck out of me, especially hearing from some of the folks across on the other side of the bridge, which don't have it as bad as I do, because I got to drive over that bridge, and it backs all the way up from Oakland Park. So, with the addition of this, with the addition of any other developments along that corridor, it's just going to be nightmarish. It's already nightmarish. I think it's a bigger problem than, than just this project. I just don't see where we could hang one project and blame all of our problems on one project, but as a city, I think we need to start taking a long, hard look at ourselves, and I don't know how we get rid of development rights, because that's an impossible task, too, but we do have to fix the infrastructure, we do have to, you know, widen the roads, we do have to come up with viable public transportation, all of those things have to happen, and I'm hoping they will happen, but it's really hard for me to say no to a project like this, but I'm very torn, I'd love to say no. Now, one thing I will say that it troubles me about this, and you mentioned deferring it, to speak to the Neighborhood Association, I think you need to talk to the folks over in Dolphin Isles and Bermuda River area and Galt Ocean Mile, because, forget the folks in Coral Ridge, I mean, they've got pretty free access to the Federal Highway, and they can sneak through their own neighborhood. Our neighborhood, this is it, this is the bottleneck. So, I would hope that if you do defer this for a later time, that you would reach out to those Neighborhood Associations as well. Thank you.
So, before we call for a motion, do you want to consider deferring it, or you want to move forward?
I guess I can leave that up to the board. I, I think all of the problems in the area are being put on this project, so I don't know what a deferral would necessarily accomplish here. It's up to the board, I guess. We'd happily accept a deferral, if that's what the board wants.
Okay. Any other further questions? Somebody want to make a motion? Well, if, are you asking us to defer it? That's what I'm saying.
He's saying it's up to us, he's not asking, I asked him, I asked him if he wanted to, and he's leaving up to the board.
No, my opinion is that the, the project stands on its merits, especially compared to the previous one, so I...
I mean, I'll file, I'll, I'll make a motion to defer, to see what everyone wants to do, just to move this along. All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second? I don't think I have to do a packet on that one. I think it's just a motion to defer.
I'm saving your mics now.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Brad Cohen, motion to defer.
I think all motions have to have a second, right? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Discussion on that motion?
Nope, go ahead, yep, sorry.
What do we accomplish by deferring it? What's the goal?
I just think more interaction with the Neighborhood Association would be appropriate, and some of the associations who weren't contacted, I think it'd be important, because they're most affected by anything happening along that corridor. Anything on the barrier island is bottlenecked on any bridge, so I think it's really important for the folks who are developing along that corridor to reach out and, you know, be sure that concerns are addressed.
Do you want to hear from them?
I would love for the applicant to speak to those folks, yeah.
I think we have to pick a date certain, is that right?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, yeah, so you're under your second extension under the statute, I believe, it's April 13, 2025, is the drop-dead deadline on which the city has to make a final determination on this, so...
We can extend that until May.
So, that's the guideline in terms of deferral, it has to be before that date.
What was the date, sorry?
Presently, it's April, but, Mr., April 13 of this year, but Mr. Shine is saying that he would extend it till May.
Realistically, how much time does that give the applicant and the neighborhoods to get together and...
Just the days?
Huh? No, because it's got, we've got to approve it, then it's got to go two hearings to the city, right?
It's, it's subject to a 30-day City Commission request for review period. So, we would like you to build in a period for the call-up period, which, you know, the City Commission is very concerned about the use of the statute to subvert their ability to call up items, so if you would build in, build in a time period for that as well.
We would appreciate if we can come back next month.
Is that feasible, Ella?
I would, in that case, recommend an extension to June, I just don't think it's going to be enough time for the applicant to meet with the neighbors, and then come back to this board and still offer the commission a 30-day call-up period.
We have a contractual deadline in May that will not allow us to do that, unfortunately.
Okay.
I'm willing to meet whenever they're available, though.
So, we have a motion and a second to defer, and it does not sound like we have to put a date to this.
I am recommending that a date be placed, and it sounds like it would be till the next meeting in order to defer.
I made a motion, so the motion is deferred till March, till the March meeting.
John, you're accepting that?
She can get that or not.
Mr. Baracko?
Yep, I accept that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, what's the...
18th, is it? Yeah, it's the same as...
19th, yeah.
It should be the same as February, so...
19th, yeah.
19th.
You asked further discussion. I want to say that I, I agree with what Shari is saying, and that, that I don't see what's going to happen with the deferral, and I think these folks are going to reach out to the neighborhoods, and I don't see anything changing unless someone makes a concession, which means these folks will have to pare down units and what, and do something like that. It will, it will probably, more meeting with the neighbors will mobilize more neighbors, and will have more people speaking here at the next meeting, is what it is, too. But I don't see that there's an objective, it's going to be meet, be... But I don't see that there's an objective that's going to be meet, be met by reaching out and, and touchy-feely, basically. I think, a- as what Andrew said, I think we're piling on the traffic, the city's traffic problem, onto this one project. It's the city's traffic problem. And, and these people have their property, it's, it's within the zonings. Uh, they did use the TDR that the city has encouraged to try and get to, get, uh, historic, you know, preservation, people to preserve historic. And now if we take that away, that historic person will say, great, now I can't even sell my units. You know, why do I want to be here doing this? It, it's all this, things are there for a reason and these folks are using it. And they're not overly dense or, or out of whack. I mean, if, if you look at the downtown, you look a lot of other areas, there's a lot of other units there. So, um, anyway, I just don't think a deferral is going to do anything except, except cause a lot more procedural and, and timing for everyone. So that's it, that's what I wanted to say. I heard what, I heard what you said there, Shari. I know where you were going and I feel the same thing. And so everyone think about that on this, please.
Leslie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sheckman?
No.
Mr. McTeague?
No.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Mr. Barocco? Ms., or Vice Chair Cohen?
No.
Chair Weymouth?
No.
So the deferment, um, fails.
Mr. Shine, is there any way your client could potentially consider one floor without a big...
What are you saying, Patrick?
I'm asking if, if the client might consider one floor worth of reduction...
I don't think it's the flooring, it's the, it's the density, it's, it's, everybody's complaining about the traffic.
But one floor reduces head counts, reduces, it's kind of a, I don't know, I'm just saying, if you reduce a floor, you're reducing the number of heads. We're trying, I'm trying to come to a, some kind of middle ground here between...
I, I, I understand and I, I can, I, I, I don't know design-wise if I can answer that question right now. I think losing five units is probably financially feasible. I don't think it's going to make a difference in traffic. I don't think twenty-six units are going to really make a difference in traffic, though. Um, I, I, if that's what the board wants us to do, we can explore it. I just, I think we're, we're just picking at the edges here and, and it's not, this is not a big project. It's hundred and twenty-nine units. Um, I, I can explore it if that's what the board wants, I just don't, I, I can't answer affirmatively right now.
I think he's saying no to your question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
All right, somebody like to make a motion? There he is.
Here we go, I'm getting the book out.
Throw the book out. It's also on your pad.
That's true. I move to adopt the resolution approving site plan level three, case num-, I'm sorry, case number V... Oh, gosh, I lost it. S, UDP S twenty-four zero three zero, based on the following facts of finding, the facts of the city staff report, testimony heard of the applicant. And, and, the applicant, and, uh, and it meets the standards requirements of the ULDR and criteria for the proposed uses cited in the resolution.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sheckman seconded it. Any further discussion before we vote? Leslie, call the roll, please.
Who should I start with? Um, Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Barocco?
No.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
No.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
A pass is forwarded to three.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
I echo the concern that you guys have in the traffic and all, and I am hoping that that all gets straightened out when Broward County finally starts spending some of that penny tax money that we've been dumping in there to coordinate all those lights and get the traffic flowing, so... Stay passionate. All right. Next case, case number UDP T two-five-zero-zero-one. Disclosures?
No, no disclosures required.
None.
None, none required, right?
None required on this.
John, none's required. Good for you.
You had none. Be scary.
All right.
Good evening. Uh, Jim Hetzel, Principal Urban Planner, this case UDP T twenty-five-zero-zero-one. This includes proposed amendments to the Unified Land Development Code for the Uptown project area. I think everyone's pretty familiar with the area, uh, but I'll kind of give a little bit of background in where it's located, obviously, is off I ninety-five and Cypress Creek Road. Some of the boundaries up there, you can see, is about three hundred and sixty-three acres. It was created back in twenty-fourteen with a group called Envision Uptown. And it would, the code amendments and the master plan were adopted into twenty-nineteen. We've been processing a land use plan amendment that is going to be adopted hopefully by our commission on March fourth, on second reading, so the land use will be in place for a transit-oriented development, land use designation. So that's just a quick kind of background history of the project area. What's in front of you are proposed text amendments to the code to deal with three things. Basically, the approval process for Uptown, parking reduction, uh, creating a parking reduction for the Uptown area and updating our development permit tables and procedures. That's generally the three, uh, aspects of it. But I'll kind of get into the details here so we can talk about each effort. Obviously, you guys know this is part of our city initiatives in the area, for, Uptown's one of them, along with downtown, northwest, it's a project priority area for us, yes?
I do have a disclosure that I have to make. Um, I have, uh, family members that own, um, large amounts of property in that area. So I, although I don't, I think I could still vote on it, I feel uncomfortable voting on it, so I'm gonna refrain from voting on it. Go ahead.
So I'll kind of give an overview of each section. The first section, forty-seven twenty-four, is development permits and procedures. And basically, the intent here is to modify the approval process for projects in Uptown. What this does is it amends the threshold for approval, uh, that when someone's requesting deviations to the master plan, which is already in the code today, uh, changes it from a site plan level three to a site plan level two, subject to commission approval. And, uh, just updating the table in general is what this section will do. The next is with Uptown zoning districts, which is section forty-seven thirty-seven B. That gets a little bit more detailed as far as the specific amendments. Includes the alternate design solution process and approval. The design team review, which is a unique feature, that will look at the deviations and give a report on whether the deviations meet the overall intent for the design deviation based on the master plan. Uh, it also looks at amending some of the definitions and monitoring of development. The monitoring of development aligns with our land use approval that we'll be getting, uh, soon. Hopefully, we have to monitor the projects as they move forward. So I'll kind of keep this quick, just so if you have any questions, let me know. The next section deals with forty-seven thirty-seven B point four, which is the permitted uses. We modified the permitted uses to permit residential, single-use residential as a permitted use, where before that was part of a mixed-use development. It was required as part of a mixed-use development, I should say. The next section, forty-seven thirty-seven B five, deals with the dimensional standards. Working with some of the stakeholders in the area, we were looking at the building height and some of the other requirements and worked with them because of construction costs, uh, high-rise versus mid-rise. We felt it appropriate to change the height of the buildings to, uh, eighty, ninety feet to provide flexibility based on construction costs. There's also slight modifications to the tower step-backs that are in there as well. The next section deals with some specific requirements in forty-seven thirty-seven B six, which deals with some of the street, um, definitions, building design. We created bicycle regulations and minor language modifications in there as well. What the streets, uh, definitions aligned with the master plan was one of the amendments. We also looked at building corner design to enhance it because it was a little unclear in the code. Um, parking garage screening for those facades that don't fade a primary street or secondary street. And we created bicycle standards, which did not exist before because of the land use that's coming, uh, the TOD land use, so it's going to get approved, it aligns with that. The next section is forty-seven twenty, which is dealing with parking reductions. What we did, since the land use is going to change to TOD, we thought it was appropriate to create a reduction for Uptown. Where residential was not permitted before, this would include residential as part of that reduction. In addition to that, we've created some criteria and also some mitigation options that a applicant can propose. So that, again, all to align with the TOD land use. We worked with stakeholders in the area for about nine months probably or so to kind of get these code amendments up in front of you. The land use is going to get approved, so everything's kind of coming together. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any of them.
Any questions for Mr. Hetzel?
I do. So, so now, now, no Uptown, Uptown urban village project will come, will, will be a site, they won't be site plan level threes.
Correct.
Which means they won't come to us.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not going to see any of those, pretty much. They'll either go, they'll go as a two and, and the DRC, Development Bureau, will take care of it and/or the commission will then, if anything happens, any variance, it'll go to commission directly.
Correct. And we'll all drop out. How the code was written before was if it was a level two, if they met all the design requirements, they were going as a level two, which is DRC approval. If they deviated, they could go as a level three to the planning and zoning board. One of the reasons why we changed that, working with the stakeholders, was I, they identified that in other parts of the city, like downtown, it's a level two, subject to commission approval if they're deviating. So it's to be consistent with the other master plan areas, uh, throughout the city and the process for them.
Okay. Now, I wasn't aware that we weren't seeing the downtown, all the downtown ones. I, I figured they were just doing it within a very wide, very loose zonings there. And they, we do see them some now and then, I, we have in the, the four years I've been on the board.
Some of them, the code requires if they're on the river, New River, they have to come in front of you. So there's some nuances there with downtown that forces the applicant to come in front of them.
The vast, most of them aren't, aren't really, I guess the way they don't come to us.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we open it up to the public? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this? I see a lot of land use attorneys out there.
We know who you are.
Seeing and hearing done, we'll close the public portion of this. Is there any further discussion or motion? Work with me, guys.
We're, we're gonna miss seeing you guys, we really are, you know?
It's on the, it's on the tablet.
He's got it, he's just getting the page.
Just saying it's on your tablet.
Anyone else have any discussions to make?
No, no more discussion.
Okay, okay.
Just a motion.
So this, I got, sorry, I gotta get to a little, to the other one here. Rezoning. So, so, oh, this is UDLR amendments. Thank you for that, okay. Okay. I move to reme- to recommend approval of case number T, UDP T twenty-five-zero-zero-one. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Uh, and, and the board hereby finds that the text and amendments to ULDR are consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Second.
Patrick, you second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Leslie, call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Barocco?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
I'm refraining.
Oh, that's right, thank you. Stay in, uh, Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
All right.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carlanne. Carlanne's here, talk to us about case number UDP T two-four zero-zero-two.
And good evening, Chair and members of the board. Carlanne Devonish with Development Services Department. This item is for an amendment to the Unified Land Development Regulations for section forty-seven thirty-nine, which is the development regulations for the annexed area. And this is to update the height requirements for that area. Um, if you may recall, last year I came to the board and I originally proposed increasing the height from what is now twenty feet and, um, well, I should say twenty feet or rather two stories because in the annexed area, the height is measured in stories, which equates to twenty feet for the two stories or four stories. And we were recommending going up to thirty-five feet in height for the single-family dwelling, um, standard single-family dwelling homes. Uh, but it was said at that meeting that it looks like there was a miscommunication as to whether the Lauderdale Isle Neighborhood Association wanted to go up to that thirty-five feet. So we went back, met with them, and it was said that they would favor twenty-five feet in height. And so we are proposing twenty-five feet in height, um, just to make sure that we're giving the people what they want. Um, I also re-engaged Merrill's Park and I also was able to get them to favor twenty-five feet in height as well. So that is what my, what I am proposing for tonight. Primarily, the rest of the amendments are the same. It was just that change to change the single-family dwelling from thirty-five feet to twenty-five feet. And that is it for that amendment, for that case. And I'm here for any questions, thank you.
Any questions for Carlanne? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to discuss this, be heard on this? Sir? Thank you. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Eric Sullivan, two-five-three-six Way, Howard Lane in, uh, Lauderdale Isles. Just here to support the item, this will help our neighborhood, that's all. Thank you.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
I couldn't even get the clock going. Thank you. Anybody else want to be heard on this? All right, we'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for discussion or, uh, motion.
I move to recommend approval of case number UDP T twenty-four zero-zero-two. And the board hereby finds that the text amendments to ULDR are consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Patrick seconds. Any further discussion? Leslie, call the roll, please.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Barocco?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
Carlanne, you're still up. Case number UDP T two-five zero-zero-five.
Good evening again. So this is an amendment to the Unified Land Development Regulations, uh, section forty-seven dash two-point-two, which is our measurement section. This is amending, uh, rather revising how we define the term grade. If you all may recall again, I was here a couple of months ago, that was in November, with a presentation, and I have it on deck, but I don't think I really need to go through it. But basically, just going over what we are proposing today. Uh, so we are proposing to be able to have an option to gr- to, um, measure grade from the crown of road. So that's one of the proposals. And then the next revision would be to revise how we measure non-habitable structures like fences. And that will be based on the ground to the top of the non-habitable accessory structure. And that is what I'm proposing for this amendment. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any...
Ladies first, John. Ladies first, John.
Carlanne, I just want to understand, because I'm looking at the depiction. And we, I remember having this conversation last time, right? So I'm trying to understand the, the neighboring, uh, higher elevation, the fence would go where?
So that was, that was the previous, that, so, and let me back it up a little bit. So, so previously, prior to the existing code requirements right now, you measured from the budding... from the budding property. What happened with that is, you can see, the red area would, where everyone would need to go and request a variance for Board of Adjustment, because, because they were measuring from the neighborhood, I'm sorry, from the neighbor's grade, it was, you would usually get about two feet, and so folks had to go to BOA, to Board of Adjustment, to get the variance to actually go up to six feet for the grade of their property. We did that change, and what came out of that is that we started measuring from the principal structure, from the principal finished floor elevation, but the result of that was a significantly high fence. So now, instead of having about a regular six-foot fence, we were looking at some properties having like a twelve-to-fifteen-foot fence, which affected the neighbors in a negative way. And so you would see, if you see it on the structure here, you'll see how, from the neighbor's side, it looked a lot taller than six feet. And so what we're proposing is to be able to measure from the ground, and so, looking at what we're proposing now, there is going to be a step down from your property, but from the neighborhood, from the neighbor's property, you'll see that it'll still be at about six feet.
And so is that, is that a trench I'm looking at?
Burt Ford is coming, I think he has something to add. What were you just saying?
She asked, oh, she was asking if that's a trench she's looking at, and I was saying...
Side yard.
Right, it's a side yard trench.
It's a trench?
A trench side yard.
It's like...
Hey, neighborhood, Burt Ford, zoning chief, so there's been a change to the Burt Ford, there's been a change to the code of ordinances in the amount of fill that's being brought into a property now, and there's only enough fill to allow grading, and that's why you see the finished floor much higher than it was in the first slide, and so there's minimal grading going over, and that's why we want to measure from the ground now, because of the lack of fill that's being allowed to be brought into, we're not bringing up the whole lot anymore. And it's going to be, you know, right at the grade, measured from the ground, and we do that already with other non-habitable structures, like gazebos and trellises, pergolas, and the code actually says measured from the ground, and it works very well.
So let me understand, though, my trench question, the way I'm looking at this, is that there's some space between the fence, that could be several feet, so the elevated, the higher elevated slab drops off, and there's several feet before the fence then is constructed?
Yeah, it's whatever the setback is, it could be either five foot or ten foot, you know, in the main part of the city, and again, everything's going to be built on a stem wall, where they're only allowing fill inside the foundation area, and then on the outside, it's going to be much lower, just like it's represented in that picture.
Well, that's kind of abrupt, would it be sloping?
It's going to slope as much as it has to from, from the property line up to the building, in order to shed water away from the building per what's required by Florida Department of...
So everyone's yard that's elevated is going to have a moat and then a fence?
Well, it's just, it's required by FEMA, that's why they're doing the no-fill, it's a requirement for FEMA, not to elevate these lots to become islands and flood out the neighboring properties, so that's why that new code went into effect a couple of years ago, and so, with that being down, if we've got, both properties are coming in, they're meeting at the property line, we don't want to put a ten-foot fence there now, when it's measured ten-foot from the ground, because they're required not to have that much fill in there anymore. So they don't need, and when they're in their backyards with the privacy issue, they're going to have a six-foot fence on their side, as well as the existing neighbor would also have that six-foot fence.
So the way we accomplish a six-foot fence on both sides is to have the setback from the fence on the higher elevated property?
But essentially, if you look at that picture, at the property line, they're going to be very close in elevation.
But I'm seeing a sudden and abrupt drop in the, in the elevated slab to the fence line.
That's correct, that's exactly what's going to happen.
My understanding is FEMA is now restricting you from grading up your yard. You can put fill under the house to accomplish a stem wall, but you are not allowed to raise up your exterior land elevation, so they will be relatively comparable both sides, you know, and not so long ago, we were raising them up two or three feet to meet the seawall and everything, which I thought was a better way to do it long-term, but now they're doing this, so the grade doesn't come up. The problem, I think, that will be what it will be, is that the new home builder is going to get about a three-foot fence when they stand on their pool deck or different things that aren't also at grade, it's going to be like a short fence to them, right?
No, that's not, that's not correct, because their pool deck is going to be much lower than their finished floor, because they're not allowed to bring that fill in. The only place that they're going to be able to allow bring fill in is structural fill underneath the principal structure.
Oh, that's right.
Not under, not under pool decks, not under anything else.
So the backyard would be lower potentially than the, than the slab is?
That's correct.
So the whole yard would be...
The whole yard is going to be...
This is only the section that relates to underneath the house?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, and that's it, and that's why it's comparable to both, both properties.
Okay, now it makes sense, okay.
So all we're talking about, Spence, is right now, we're not talking about pool decks, decks, anything else? Because we've got decks coming out of houses all the time with barbecues and exits and steps and things like that, so are we restricting any of that?
It's all at grade now.
Say that one more... No, that's impossible.
Repeat that one more time.
If you walk out of your house and you've got a deck, like most houses have decks, porches...
You're going to need to step down.
Yeah, it's going to be like...
Out your door?
Yeah.
That's correct.
How's that even a permitted by code? You can only do that in a garage, right?
How's that impact ADA?
It doesn't.
It doesn't, that's a different code.
It only, it only impacts it for apartment buildings and things like that.
So Burt, just so I'm clear, what we're looking at right now is, we're just talking about grade definitions relative to a fence, but now you're telling me I can't have any exterior slab beside air-conditioned space above or below?
It's going to be determined by, and it may not be that drastic, it's going to be determined by the engineering department, and it could be a foot higher than that, it could be a foot and a half higher than that, but again, if the finished floor is at eight foot or nine foot, and the ground sloping down, what we're going to let them do is at six foot, you know, we don't want a nine-foot fence there or a nine-foot concrete wall, we just want it to be measured for whatever the ground is going to be approved at, and it may be not where it's even, it may be a foot higher than the existing, it could be two foot higher, whatever the engineering allows, but we just want it to be measured from the new property's ground elevation where the fence is being installed.
The natural grade?
Yes.
Is there a maximum or minimum grade, percentage grade slope on, on side yards and rear yards?
It's just enough to shed water from the foundation away from...
So it could be forty-five degrees if you wanted it?
No, no, it won't be that, it's going to be, you know, two, three percent.
Yeah, and it should slope.
So weird.
It should slope away from the fence too, but...
And then what about...
It should, and within the five foot, it's, it's even hard now to get it with a five-foot setback, it's just, it's just the way it is, and that, that part's not going to change, it's still going to be difficult to do that, but they do put a swale in there.
Yeah, and what we've been seeing too, this is really weird for you guys on these whole flood issues, you have to contain so, so much volume of water on your own site, we're having to put in sheet pile on the perimeter of the site, like two feet high.
That's going away.
Huh?
That's going away.
What do you mean it's going away? That's...
You can't put those sheet piles in the dirt.
No, no, you can, it's sheet pile, it looks like a fence, but it holds water on your property, so your water won't go under your neighbor's property.
So you're not bringing in fill, just putting in sheet pile?
You're putting in a sheet pile, and it holds water in, and you put your fence next to it, and it's kind of part of the edge of your property, it's weird, yeah, it's getting strange.
I have a pond in my, they've required me to dig out, my swale is nothing, I'm talking about a pond in the front yard, but what I wanted to ask is about the AC unit, so is the AC unit slab, that's going to be up where the house slab is, right?
That's it, that's what's required, yes.
Okay, that's...
So the house is on a pedestal now, and the yard is below it?
Yes.
And your air conditioner's on a pedestal as well?
Yes, for your neighbors to see over the fence.
Your seawall's...
And there's a, and again, there's a few reasons that, that the grade ended up changing, where we don't allow that much fill in as we used to. One of them is to protect the surrounding neighbors that, that aren't raising their property at this time, but the other one is also to benefit the entire city, who's paying for flood insurance, because our CRS rating is currently at seven out of ten, and for every point, there's a half percentage discount for everyone who's in the flood zone paying for flood insurance. We were at a six, and the city wants to get that back down as much as we can to save the entire citizenry some money on their flood insurance, and this is one of the ways that we get CRS points, CRS points for that.
And is this required by FEMA? I just want to make sure that I understand it, FEMA is the one who's requiring this, and we're following FEMA, or we're just doing this...
Just the finished floor.
Just the finished floor?
Just the finished floor.
How, how... This whole thing's all about the fence. It's all about a fence?
It's just about the fence.
Gotcha. Okay.
And again, regardless of where the...
They should be doing away with fences, and neighbors should give to their own neighbors again. Yeah, that sounds great. And that's not my motion, but that's my comment.
And again, wherever the fill's going to be approved at, we just want to measure from that ground level, that's all, very simple.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I know we keep talking about fences, but this is a general change, the definition of grade, and anywhere the word grade is in the code is going to be affected by whatever we decide tonight, and it's just not the fence, I know it all comes from this fence, but we really need to think about changing this definition that affects other parts of the code, I don't know what it affects.
Are you wanting to defer this item?
No.
I'd just like to know, you know, the occurrence of grade in the code, and how it would affect other things in the code, because we keep focusing on the fence, which I get is a problem, I mean, I don't want a twelve-foot fence next door.
It's for non-habitable structures, is what this applies to.
No, this is, it says it right here, it's measurements, this is the general measurements of our code, I go to that chapter for any general description, whether it's setback, height, it affects everything in the code. So this redefinition of grade would affect everything that has the word grade in, in a code section.
Just for the non-habitable structures, for number two. If you're looking...
It's not what it says here.
Are you looking at the exhibit, page one?
I'm looking at grade text amendment forty-seven dash two-point-two, measurements.
Number one.
Number one, so that is an option, right, number two is regarding the fence, which is just for non-habitable structures, number two is to be able to provide an option to be able to measure from crown of the road for grade, but, but if you look at G one, it says when using determining a measurement, grade shall be the greater of, and you'll be able to, it's the same thing, we're just providing an option for you to be able to use crown of road.
Right, two is the one that is the one that is the one we're talking about with the fences and everything else.
Correct, right.
So one, it's just giving the option of the, of the two, right?
One is giving the option to, to be able to measure from crown of road for the principal structure, and two is for the fence, for a non-habitable structure, correct.
What is changing on that F then, one F, what is changing?
What is changing on, you said G one?
You're adding that whole line? G one F, what is, what is that?
That's an addition, so that's just...
That whole thing's being added, so I can choose, shall be the greater of any one of those.
Correct.
And chances are, my slab is going to be higher than the crown of road.
Yeah, and so currently, what they do is, is if it's in an exzone, which is what this affects, it's greatest was measured by natural grade, whatever natural grade was before you started construction, which is normally pretty low, and so what we're trying to afford people in an exzone is to be able to raise their, their slab up to at least eighteen inches above the crown of the road, whatever the highest part of the road is, which is higher than the lot usually, they can go even an additional eighteen inches, so that it's going to really protect their, their houses much more from flooding, because they get that extra foot and a half from what they would get now.
Mr. Chair, have a question?
And again, that's just the principal structure.
What is the, if we don't approve this, or without this, what is, what would the homeowner do now? They would simply seek a modification, because somebody doesn't want it twelve feet tall, the other one doesn't want it six feet, so they would come to whom and ask for that adjustment? What, what do they, what happens right now?
The Board of Appeals? Board of Adjustment?
Board of Appeals?
Yeah, for any kind of a variance, it's the Board of Adjustment.
So they've kicked it, they've kicked it over to us to figure out.
So otherwise, without this, on a case-by-case basis, homeowners would go and seek some compromised result for this?
That's where, that's where it's coming from, that's what they're doing.
No.
And they want to codify something.
So, but again, they were going to the Board of Adjustment, because at that time we were allowing fill in the entire lot, and the lots were, the whole lot was coming up three or four feet. Now we're not allowing that extra fill, except for underneath the foundation, underneath the building itself, so the rest of the lot's going to be essentially at the same elevation as the neighbor, so we're trying to avoid nine-foot tall walls on both sides.
No, I understand that, but when they come, when they come to the Board of Adjustment, they say, hey, you know, this elevation is three feet taller, what, what do you, what is the result of that request?
They don't come to Board of Adjustment for the existing code. You're talking about the elevation of the house?
No, no, well, so what happens currently if you've got a slab that is significantly taller than the neighboring one, and there's a desire to put up a fence, and on one side it's going to be significantly higher, the other lower, what, how is that resolved without this?
They get a permit to build a fence that's that high on their neighbor's side.
Or they don't.
No, they, they get the permit, because the code presently allows them to, so it allows them to build up their entire property, and they can put the fence at the measurement of grade that we currently have on their side of the property, and so the issue is not with the homeowners, they don't seek a variance, because they're completely fine, they've built their new construction at this elevated height with a fence that is about six feet on their side of the fence, but on the other side of the fence, the other property owner is looking at this huge barrier or wall.
And then, then staff gets phone calls saying, how could we allow this, but it's permitted by the code, so it's different based on everyone's grade.
You can't even do that anymore, right, because FEMA took the ability to allow people to do that, did they not?
Sort of.
Sort of.
Right now, they are being, non-habitable structures are being measured at the finished floor elevation, so whatever the finished floor elevation of that principal structure is, that's what they're being measured at, so it's six feet on their property, but it again could result to about twelve feet or nine feet from the neighbor's property.
Are you still allowing grade to be brought up? No, this is the old code that was made to help people that built new houses when they raised the dirt, they're no longer allowed to raise the dirt, so to me, FEMA fixed this whole question. But there's a glitch in our code now. I get it, because we adjusted to something that now is taken away. So even if they don't raise the grade now, they still measure that non-habitable, that fence, based on our current code definition of grade, which is based on the floor elevation of the house.
Correct.
But what I want the board to understand is that legally, they can't raise the land anymore, so this is somewhat, it doesn't fit anymore, is the point, we got to go back to the way it was.
That is correct.
If we could raise the land, that's why they were doing it, to help the people, but right now, you know what I mean, all the land is the same, so there is no, or tell me, what do you see?
I'm dying to talk.
Go, please.
So we keep looking at this fence, and everybody seems to be saying, hey, look over here at this fence.
Right.
But this is anything that is not the primary structure, which Burt actually said is a deck, is a gazebo, is any other structure that's not part of the interior of your house, so can you imagine having your house where you're elevated? And listen, we're looking at the code now, FEMA could come back next year and say, we all have to raise our houses another five feet, so now we look like Sanibel or the Keys, right, so now we're Stiltsville, and you can't have a deck come out of your principal structure, it's kind of weird, you're storing water on your sites still, because you're on stilts, so it doesn't make sense for me that this item number two would be a catch-all, it should specifically have one that's... It should specifically have one that says, hey, fences, it's at natural grade, and that's where you measure a six-foot fence from, and in that setback area, that's where you got to stay, at natural grade. And then you still have the possibility to have an elevated deck, and you could store water under a deck easily, you know? You could have flood vents under a deck.
And this, and this will not, this will not prevent that. So you can, you can still have a raised deck. You just can't have a slab on grade-raised deck. If you want to have a raised deck on four-by-fours, and you want to have it match the finished floor or six inches below, that's perfectly fine because as you said, it's going to be void underneath, and it will hold water. This isn't going to prevent you from having a raised deck. All it, all you can't do is have slab-on-grade-raised decks. So you certainly can do that.
Okay, so whether it's wood or whether they do concrete piling and pour a floating deck, the point is that-
And the only restriction with that is, part of the existing code is that it just have a five-foot setback instead of being all the way to the property line because of, again, privacy issues. So, but you, it does, this does not prevent having a raised deck at all.
A raised solid deck, or-
Slab-on-grade, yes, no, you can't do that because the fill's not-
Correct. And the pool, is the pool allowed to be elevated to the floating deck, we'll call it? Okay.
Okay. So if they say, I'm allowed to have a 10-foot gazebo measured from grade, and I push it up two feet, does that mean I only get an eight-foot gazebo?
The code already says that they have to be measured from the ground. It's already in there for that. That's why I'm saying, we're just trying to get fences to be similar to everything else.
Okay.
Because the code actually says height is measured from the ground. And that's essentially what we're trying to do here, is measure from wherever that fence is, it's going to be measured from the ground, just like all the other structures are currently.
Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
There we go.
Here we are. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP T25005, and the board hereby finds that the text amendments to the ULDR consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Second. Second by Mr. Cohen. Any further discussion? Leslie Cole, the role, please.
No.
No? Is that what you said? What'd you say?
No.
Thank you. Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr., oh, sorry, Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
No.
Chair Weymouth?
No.
Motion fails.
Any communication to the City Commission? Anything for the good of the city of Fort Lauderdale? Anyone want to adjourn this meeting?
Motion adjourned.
We got to get a second. You can't go until we get a second.
I got one.
We're adjourned.